Will you join me with a white suit?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Claudia?
Yeah.
Tracy Allen? Barbara?
Here.
Allie?
Well.
And then? Stephanie?
Yeah.
John?
Here.
Doug?
Yeah.
Al?
Here.
Joy?
Here.
In New Jersey, open public meetings more than that is to ensure the right of the public to have a daily notice of and to attend the notice of having daily notice of and to attend the meetings of public file and any business or record their inputs is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with provisions of this act, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has called the notice of this regular meeting to be publicized by having made time to space there on the bench in the record of historic ledger newspapers and sanctuary, borough works, and borough libraries, as well as opening in the school's physical offices, faculty rooms, and the board office. According to the Jersey Public Board 2001 Act 226, the smoking and use of any toxic product is strictly prohibited anywhere in the upper building or anywhere in the ground, school grounds, including the company to the parking lot, dry sea areas, and athletic venues. Violators will be subject to applying statute of speed under the law.
The mission of the Riverdale Regional School District is to provide a safe, student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach their potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and respect for oneself and other, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community and an ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in active partnership, to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and succeed in the New Jersey Student Learning Standards.
Thank you, Stephanie. We'll move into public comments on agenda items only. There will be a segment at the end of the meeting for comments on anything that is not pertaining to the agenda here tonight. Doesn't look like we have any to public here tonight. I don't have any presentations. I see we have some administration here. They are going for us.
At the end of the meeting.
A dance?
At the end, at the end of our meeting before we get all business, do business, Vito is going to talk about the portrait of a graduate meeting, which is tomorrow night.
Fine.
Brian and Rob came to make sure you remember who they are.
Okay.
So the audience are referring to Brian Pepe, who is our high school principal, and Rob Orinovich, who is our middle school principal, who are here with us tonight. Thank you.
Very good. It wasn't on the agenda, that's why.
Correct.
Our student member report. Maybe Patrick would like to introduce our new student members?
Yes. So before I begin, before I turn it over to our student representatives, the board had asked us to have a more rigorous process in order for the selection of our candidates to serve as student liaisons. Mr. Pepe contacted all students in the class of 23, asked them to provide a letter of interest, including references, and then all the applicants were reviewed and interviewed during the spring of the school year. I think you had 12 applicants, yes?
Yeah.
Yeah, 12 applicants were. And then of those 12 applicants, three rose to the top. So Elizabeth Lizzie Cuantes is an Ardell resident, involved in many aspects of the community, and is not here at this present moment because she's playing soccer down on the field or may be joining us in a little bit. Anna Bedeck, also an Ardell resident, also a leader among the community, will be hopefully joining us as well because she is also playing soccer tonight down the field. So that leaves us Joy Zhang, who is with us tonight. Welcome, Joy. Joy is a River Edge resident and has also been involved in our society debate team and a variety of different other activities, including our Triumph Honor Society. We, I had the pleasure of meeting with them and Mr. Pepe. I guess it was right before school opened, the week before school opened, and we had a great opportunity to talk about what their expectations are. And Joy gets to go solo tonight. So without further ado, let me introduce you to Joy Zhang.
Hi, everyone. My name is Joy Zhang, and I'll be one of your student representatives this year. I wanted to start off our first student report with a rundown on our first week of school. So even though it was a rainy day the first day, it didn't like somber the mood here at Riverdale. Students were all happy to be back in the building, seeing their friends and meeting their new teachers. The middle school welcomed their new seventh graders at a seventh grade barbecue at the end of August, and they all had their pictures taken on Friday. Seniors had a great kickoff to the start of the year and enjoyed their traditional first day of school pictures in the senior parking lots. We also had an opportunity to take pictures in front of the new Riverdale backdrop that Mr. Pepe organized. Senior sunrise was a success on Friday morning, and the car decorating contest was enjoyed by all. And the freshman class had their orientation meeting on Wednesday with Mr. Pepe and the administrative team. The upperclassmen look forward to showing them what Riverdale is all about. Next, I would like to cover some of the new safety procedures the school administration introduced to keep track of students' whereabouts. Students must now fill out a digital hall pass and forms whenever they leave class. Teacher hallway monitors can view an Excel sheet of where students are signing in and out of. Recently, a headphone van was introduced for students in the class hallway and during study hall in efforts to prevent students from not hearing emergency or staff instructions. While some students are indifferent to this new rule, there has been a petition introduced to get rid of it. Only seniors are permitted to leave school on school grounds during the day. Seniors were given their IDs as well as their new parking permits this week. The senior parking lots have new changes. Seniors with permits are only allowed to park in the spaces by the oval, on the side of McKay Avenue, and on the lower gym entrance. Seniors are mostly happy that there are more parking spots available but are getting adjusted to the distance needed to walk to the school entrances. Additionally, a single point of entry at the oval was designated for students and visitors after 8:00 a.m. Although sometimes inconvenient, the new safety procedures are effective at keeping everyone safe, most students support these new changes and welcome them as they're put in place for our own benefit. We also had our fall sports kickoff last week, and we were off to a great start. The marching band and cheerleaders enjoyed their summer sleepaway in team building camps. They perform at every football game. The football team won against Bergenfield this past weekend. Girls tennis beat Westwood 3-2 this past Thursday. Girls soccer beat Passack Valley this past Thursday in double overtime, 1-0. Boys soccer plays at Westwood tonight and faces off against Ramsey this Thursday. And girls and boys cross country beat at their season opener Invitational this past Saturday at Drellington Park in Mawa. And lastly, some upcoming events. All classes have officer elections coming up and expect poster promotions in the hallways in the coming weeks. Picture day for underclassmen was today and will be tomorrow. The club fair will be on September 20th during both lunches. The Ryan Story Assembly for the ninth and 10th graders will take place on September 20th. The Riverdale High School Back to School Night and Freshman Parent Night will be on September 22nd, and the Middle School Back to School Night will be on September 15th. And finally, starts from testing will begin on September 29th, and the students will be testing during class this year instead of having delayed openings. Thank you.
You're going to call that the student member slash president's report, where it basically covered everything. Brian, did you give her your email from August 15th?
She was prepared.
She was prepared. Thank you, Joy. Your participation in the meeting is not only limited to your member report. If anytime during the meeting something piques your interest and you have something to say, feel free. Okay? My report, I had a few items that Joy had covered. One of the more important nights, I know my wife was a teacher and she always loved the back to school night. And in the high school, it was September 22nd, as Joy had mentioned. And in the middle school, Rob, it is?
The 15th.
The 15th, okay. So those were the two. And then also the Ryan story that Joy mentioned also. Patrick had sent out the flyer. I think this would be a pretty good item for everyone to get involved with, to see a father's part in lessons presented by John Halligan. His presentation will cover lessons learned regarding how to deal with bullying, soccer bullying, and teen depression. That is September 20th, 7 o'clock, in the high school auditorium. That's all I have tonight. So Patrick, what's your thing?
In all seriousness, I don't know, Brian, if you want to say anything about the first couple of days of school or what's going on, but.
Good, you're good.
Know what the atmosphere was in the building, how it was different than it was in the past?
Yeah, I mean, it was a pleasure. It was awesome to see the students back last week. As Joy shared, there was a buzz around the hallway, for sure. They adjusted to our new security protocols within an hour. So they responded with all their talent. And I emailed them my normal Sunday email, which I sent out yesterday, thanking them for a great first week and looking forward to, you know, an outstanding school year. You know, with athletics and marching band and cheerleading, all the activities kicking off, we have our club fair on the 20th, right, during lunch. I know the students are really excited about that. And you notice the hallway, they have some posters up for elections. They're all taking place this week. In particular, the senior election, there's about, I think, 12 students running. So definitely will be some excitement when that takes place. So it's a great week. We're looking forward to an amazing school year. So thank you for your support.
So I just want to recognize our student ambassadors at the middle school in years past. We've chosen our student ambassadors through a process of recommendations from teachers. We've chosen our eighth grade student ambassadors at the beginning of the school year. This past year, we decided to choose them at the end of last year as they were seventh graders. So we were able to utilize them over the summer for a lot of building tours. We had a very successful technology enrichment program for our incoming seventh graders and some of our new students in the district. We had about 120 students show up for that. It was a three-day program that Tiffany Corre put together. And we had some teachers work to kind of introduce the technology in the district to the incoming students. So I think the transition from the elementary schools to the middle school has gone well, especially from a technology standpoint. We were able to get laptops mostly distributed before the first day of school. The last 40 to 50 students were able to get their laptops on the very first day of school. So we really had an opportunity this year to hit the ground running, which has been great. We have some new lunch practices that we're working on this year. We tried to control the first floor of the building, you know, and the kids have really done a terrific job of, you know, following through with these rules. We have our new patio. I thank Trudy, you know, with our black and gold tables and umbrellas that the kids have really, you know, gotten to enjoy spending time outside and eating lunch. The energy is high. You know, we're talking about things like, you know, building resiliencies, resilience, excuse me, overcoming obstacles. So these are the types of things that we kind of talked about the first week, week and a half of the school year. So I'm excited about it. We have back to school night in person Thursday night, and I think it's going to be a nice crowd. And I think everyone's going to be happy and pleased with what they see when they come from middle school. Thank you.
So to put Trudy on the spot, just tell us a little bit about some of the projects that got up.
So everyone's aware about the track while it's complete. So the whole track is open and closed for the summer, and I think you might see it now.
Looks great.
And then over the summer, with the regular maintenance, you know, in the building, we, you know, the two faceless bathrooms. So the custodial maintenance staff worked very hard this summer to get the buildings where they are. Really appreciate it.
I think you'll also see in the middle school, the oval where the turnaround is in the middle school, we now have bollards up to increase security, prevent any cars from coming too close to the front entrance of the building. I think if you go into the buildings, I know there's going to be some tours later on, but you'll see that the security vestibules have also been dressed up very nicely with some Riverdale accents, shall we say. The, during the summertime, the River Edge Police Chief and the Ardell Police Chief and I met with Kathy Daddie from River Edge, who's the superintendent. Also, there's a conversation with Meg, and she was just not, who's the Ardell Superintendent, just not available on that day. Both communities are now looking at authorization of Class III officers. Class III officers are officers that are retired from the police department within four years. They are actually members of the police department, but they will be assigned to the schools. There's a lot of work that they have to get done on their end of it because there's a lot more that the municipality has to do as far as ordinances and things are concerned before they can bring it to us for any kind of discussion. We would have to execute an interlocal agreement at that point, but in case there starts to be some discussion about that, I want you to be aware that that conversation did take place, and it would certainly augment the additional security procedures that we've been placing in the buildings. For our conclusion, the mayor councils of both communities have to act, but, you know, the conversation has started as well.
Those officers are on?
They are. The, Trudy mentioned, I just want to also emphasize the great work that our maintenance and custodial staff did over the summertime. You know, Riverdale schools are beautiful. They're clean. They're neat, and they certainly work in that way on the first day of school for staff and serve the first day of school for students. I've had some of my colleagues who visited us in the wintertime and marvel at how clean our floors are, all during the course of the school year. And that's just because we have a wonderful maintenance and custodial staff, really great job putting us, putting ourselves together. Also, kudos to our Assistant Superintendent Vito, who is going to be speaking a little later, to Tiffany Corre, our Supervisor of Special Projects, and Dr. Lisa Torres, our Supervisor of BLA and Social Studies, who, along with a large number of our staff members, did yeoman's work in getting us to a point where we are now completing the entire revision of the curriculum. Tonight, we have an agenda item that will approve a number of curriculum, which puts us in compliance with the Department of Education's requirements for the two-year update. Next year, BLA and math are going to be on the list. They haven't published those standards yet, but there'll be more curriculum coming down the line as we get into the course of the school year. But it was a tremendous amount of work. I think it's over 70 documents that have been presented to the board in different phases. Tonight completes that phase. We have an agenda item later to deal with that. And I would just emphasize what both Rob and Brian said. The energy in the building, not only from the staff on the first day of school, but from the students on the first day, and both of that, both of those energies continue to that. It's pleasant to be in the buildings. The students are excited to be back without having to have a lot of other restrictions placed upon them. Staff feels the same way, too. They always have normal hiccups, a couple of scheduled things here, a bus accident here, or a bus, kid misses a bus there, that kind of a thing. All of those things take place, but thankfully, we're off to a great safe start, and the energy is just wonderful to experience. So that concludes my report. Go ahead.
Yes. How's the progress on the field house? Is that finished?
We're almost finished. It's just a few finishing touches, like some finishing inkling and things like that, but we're getting there.
We hope to be open for the first football game, but if not, we'll head back since it will be very short away after.
Okay, thank you. Let's get into some of the committee reports. We had to put off a couple of meetings that were scheduled for this week because we're waiting for audits. But I'll let Alan budget the finance.
I have nothing, but we didn't have a meeting. But on Friday, I received the first new bill payment procedure, and kudos to Trudy. It's a great system, covers everything, very easy to go through. The only thing that I didn't like about it is that you go and sign off on an email and all. So I asked Trudy to put in some kind of a electronic signature on it and all, which I couldn't believe. I received it today. Worked great. Went right back to you, so great system.
Doug, facilities and security?
We didn't have a meeting, but I did, I think it was the week before school opened. Trudy was nice enough to walk me through both the buildings and show me everything that had been accomplished. And I know Pat and Trudy went over a lot of it, but I will say that the yeoman's task, getting all of the new security devices in place in the field and, you know, the field house, when I walked through two weeks ago, was pretty close to being, you know, completed. And it was great walking through the building and seeing the classrooms, I'll say, set up normally, you know, and the school looking, you know, like it did, you know, in essence prior to COVID. So that was great. And really, the buildings looked immaculate. So, you know, really, everyone in, you know, in the administration and the staff should really congratulate on how much, you know, how great it looks.
Thank you. I was able to take a tour of the high school with the building principal, Rob Pepe, before school started, I believe it was. And, you know, he was showing me some of the updates, the new parking, and how things should flow better, and the security updates being made. I think it's a move in the right direction for our district. I also did a walk through of the facilities outside. And as everybody has mentioned, between these tennis courts, I think they were done last year, the field turf the year before that, now the track, our facilities are top-notch. And even inside the buildings are clean. Again, kudos to everyone involved. You couldn't ask for better facilities for any, any level of education. The next committee would be Community Relations and Technology. That would be Tracy Allen as the chairperson. Since she's not here, I'll just speak on her behalf. There was no meeting update, so we'll move on to curriculum. Stephanie?
So Patrick had mentioned that the second half of the, since I have the little list of, of the 72 documents.
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two. Seventy-two documents is on this. We approved a large portion at our July meeting, and the remainder is on here. As we mentioned at that meeting, for the committee, it's an ongoing process. Some of the curriculum was new, and for other reasons, we wanted to make sure that it was all approved in its state. But there will be tweaks along the way, and whether that will have to come before the board, it's just something that can be, you know, updated. Well, you know, it's more of a procedural effort, but it will all be checked off by the committee. I can tell you that, having seen some of the early documents, and there were elements in early documents that were the same, they're the same in all, in all 72 of them. And so we had comments on the earlier documents, and now looking at some of the later documents, they have all been updated and changed into that. So in the second half of everything, some of the repeat sections or the headers that needed to, you know, have all been done, which is like, makes it run through a bit more smoothly. So we appreciate all of that, all of those little things being changed as they went along. And there are some, some new courses. And at the middle school, Rob, you're bringing in a new elective. Yes, you have a new elective, right? Theater, dramatic arts, what do we call it?
Theater arts.
Theater arts. And so that will be an interesting and nice opportunity for students to, to exercise some other skills that are lifelong, like how beautifully Joy spoke this evening in front of a group of people. So it's a, it's a good opportunity for the middle school students to learn a lot of different skills. So we know that will, will go well, and we look forward to the feedback on that. And I don't even know when, probably October, October, next week.
So we'll, we'll chat.
Wait, is it next week?
Yeah, we'll talk.
Yeah, apparently we have a meeting next week.
We'll chat.
Thank you. Stephanie, Policy and Governance, Claudia?
So I'm thinking of a chat about.
So we have policy.
You do have something, but we'll, we'll talk.
We'll talk. Where do we talk? That's all I have.
I do have, I do have something on the agenda today.
Okay.
Trudy's determined.
To be secure with that.
Okay, very good. They have a motion to move to the consent agenda.
Make a motion? I'll step down.
Does anybody have any questions, concerns, or issues on anything on a consent agenda? I would like to, if I could, have Patrick comment on a couple of these items, just to clarify for people. I know it comes up almost every time we publish something like this. Patrick, under 13 Finance and District Operation, could you just comment briefly on G, K, and M for me, and just clarify for the audience that might be watching this at some point?
Sure.
How this works, the semantics behind this?
Trudy's going to help me, because I'll talk about it in general, and you can do a little bit more specific stuff. But public school districts that have non-public schools in their jurisdiction, okay, serve as a flow-through for state and federal grants that are designated for the non-public school. They are accounted for in the special fund. Trudy will talk about it, but basically, money comes in for a specific purpose, as designated, in this case for the non-public schools, which include St. Peter Academy, Bergen Academy, and Yeshiva. And then the money flows out for the same purpose.
And so what happens is I meet with each principal from those schools. We're given the allocations on the state, and then I meet with each school principal. We discuss how they want to spend the money. And then for besides the non-public nursing, they want textbooks or technology supplies. They send the information to us. We process the purchase orders. The items get delivered to their schools, and then once we receive, we then pay it. As far as non-public nursing is on the agenda, again, we contact different groups, you know, see the groups on it for the nursing centers. Once again, it flows through us.
So on your agenda, Adam G is the non-public nursing for St. Peter Academy, Bergen Catholic. Who else?
It's St. Peter, Bergen Catholic, and then.
Yeshiva. And Yeshiva.
Right.
Right, right. And then we also have, you said K is the, this is the interlocal agreement for that non-public services specifically at the academy and at Yeshiva. And M is the, is as Trudy said, we get money for nursing, security, technology, and textbooks. That's what's all laid out there. Grant totals are there, and that's what ends up at the front of 20.
And the reason why he says revise for M is because when we received our initial allocations, there was an error from the state, and they gave us another school's money, another non-public school money that had no middle school. And so we had to get rectified in that one because it was originally that one.
Very good. Does anybody else have any questions on the consent agenda? If not, Trudy?
Claudia?
Yes.
Allie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to the first board outside the consent under B, resignations and retirements. Number one, it is recommended by the superintendent that the board accept with regret the resignation due to retirement of teacher of special education, Pedro LaBarbier, effective June 30th, 2022. May I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Stephanie?
On second.
So this was a late retirement after the course of the school year, and Peter has accounted another option, which he couldn't pass up. We wish him well, we will honor him as we do all retirees at the end of the school year.
Looked like he was here for a long time.
Pete, I think, close to thirty, close to forty years, I'm done.
Thirty-two years, it's a nice one.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes, and good luck.
Alan?
Yes, thank you for your service. The second vote outside the consent agenda is under 12, miscellaneous, letter B. I'm not going to read all this because it's, it's basically a page of text, but essentially a kind of recap. The state health benefits have stated that they plan to increase health benefits by upwards of 15% for 2023. This will strain both school employees and taxpayers. So this resolution, resolution is asking the School Employees Health Benefits Commission to reconsider this large increase. They recommend that this resolution be mailed to, forwarded to Governor Murphy and other various political offices so that they can reconsider this increase. Again, you could take, take a look and look at the details on the agenda itself. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
I'll make.
No. Alan, Alan make a motion.
Okay, and Stephanie, you'll second it?
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions on this?
I just wanted to clarify, you said the "they," the "they" is New Jersey school boards, just in case somebody's like, who's the "they" that is, that is encouraging school districts to, to adopt this resolution?
Correct.
As many have already, the "they" is New Jersey school boards.
Absolutely right. Anybody else?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yeah.
Alan?
Yes. Okay. The third vote is under 13 Finance and District Operation, letter 12, the superintendent, at the request of the Board Secretary, recommends that the board accept line item transfers and the adjustments listed in the financial report for the months ending July and August 2022. We have a second?
I'll set.
Anybody have any questions on this? Trudy?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes. Lastly here, may I have a motion to move items from the executive agenda to the regulatory?
I'm in, I'm sorry.
Stephanie?
I'll set now.
Claudia? Kind of recap what we covered. Staff medical leave of absence, staff family leave of absence, additional work schedules, rescind extracurricular advisor, resignation of instructional aide, staff salary adjustments, appointment of extracurricular advisors, appointment of volunteer coaches, appointment of custodian, and appointment of a teacher. All covered under the executive agenda. Anybody have any questions concerning executive? Trudy?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes. Okay, that gets us old business, new business, and I imagine Peter was going to have his platform.
He is, I didn't know if anybody had better conduct than we already have.
I was just going to say that I think we've been talking about security for a while, and there were slow movements, but in the last year and a half, and I know there was a team of people, there wasn't, you know, it didn't come from one person's pocket or anything like that, there was a team that thoughtfully put into place many of the things that were mentioned by Doug, and by Joy, and by the principals, and while we can't control everything, it's really nice to, to feel like we put things in place that we can turn around and say we did absolutely the best that we could for our students, and our families, and our community. So I know there'll be tweaks along the way, and probably other things, and maybe things that don't become public, but it's really nice feeling the changes that have started this school year.
We have these two gentlemen, thank for that.
So at this point, Vito Delora, our Assistant Superintendent, is going to provide an update to the board on where we are with our portrait of a graduate process. Just as a reminder, our first meeting of the formal committee, which Vito will go over tomorrow evening, one of the first orders of business is to pick in the second meeting, which we'll move on to. And if you recall, at our July meeting, Vito was here with Tiffany, they did a separate presentation, but Vito also asked for some board input regarding the competencies of your portrait of a graduate, which is the subject of our second meeting of Portrait of a Graduate, so he has that to provide, provides an update about, without further ado, Mr. Delora, thank you. Hi, everybody.
One second, I just want, because the rest of the board doesn't know, obviously, to pick a committee from the board to attend the meetings, and it was Stephanie, Claudia, and Annette. They will be attending the first meeting tomorrow night, and I'll be coming along as, I'm sorry.
Because you can't.
Yeah. Because I can't, okay.
I didn't want to say it. Hi, everybody, good evening. It's my pleasure to come tonight and just kind of give you an update, and you know where we're at with our Portrait of a Graduate, I think Mr. Fletcher kind of summed everything up very well, but we have plans, we've been working on sending out invitations, we have really good RSVP kind of people coming, of course, at the last minute, they shift for people a little bit, but we still have about 20 members coming tomorrow. We have students, we have community members, we have board members, teachers, and administration will be represented tomorrow at our first meeting at 7:00. On the, I passed out for you an agenda for the meeting, which kind of gives you a global overview of the process, and as Mr. Fletcher mentioned, the first meeting is really about the why, why are we doing this work, what do we need for our students to be prepared as they move forward, and really just taking a look at connecting and sort of looking at the big picture of it all. This meeting will be from about 7:00 to 9:00 tomorrow, and there will be some interaction, as you can see from this, there's some media pulses, there's some discussions and connections. I sent this out to everybody to share, so they're prepared, there's some videos in the presentation. Smarnik will be co-hosted with With Health for Kids, who is a partner in this, they will be coming in remotely, so they'll be working and sort of walking through the big picture. Then also, at the last meeting, I had asked for some feedback on some competencies, and put those together for you. If you still have not given me your competencies, you're more than welcome to, since we will be taking a look at these mostly during the second meeting.
Vito, if I could interrupt for just a moment?
Yeah.
For the general public who may be listening in, for those who haven't been as much a part of this as possible, when we refer to the term competencies, most times, a portrait of a graduate process ends up in some type of graphic at the end of the process that becomes, if you will, the district's North Star is the term that they use. So I know some of you are familiar with another school district that has the pyramid, right, because you always tease me about the pyramid. So in each one of those slots on the pyramid, just as in other representations, the competency is the large group that's in your graphic, and then there's a lot of other detail that comes below that.
We sort of establish those competencies, and then we drill down with the competencies. So as you can take a look here, and I think we spoke about this at our last meeting while we were talking, a lot of the same thoughts kind of keep reappearing as you go through these. So it's really about wordsmithing and finding just the right expression that we want for Riverdale graduates to have as their, one of their competencies. So that's sort of our step for the first meeting. We are all set to go tomorrow night, as I mentioned, and then the second meeting, once we schedule that date, that will really be the time where we dig into establishing and sort of getting more thought on the competencies that we feel should move forward.
So you will, Vito and I also talked about this before, but we'll send a reminder out to the full board about that little exercise that we did in July, so that the members of the board that didn't have the opportunity to send it, have another shot to send in their competency list.
Yeah, you can always just email them how people this is going and keep adding to it, just your thoughts on important pieces, I think we talked with Sam at seven.
Vito, if people add to it and send it in, can you, as a lovely way of grouping light things together, so could you, because I can see a lot of light things, so if we, we have like silos of the.
Yeah, absolutely.
The light things, so at least we can emerge as, as the representatives of the board that we can kind of focus in on, on the things that the board, you know, wants.
Yep, I can compile those thoughts for you if you don't have.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions, or it's really exciting work tomorrow night, I know everybody's excited for the kickoff, it's really a great step forward in establishing competencies and taking a look at Portrait of a Graduate. So I appreciate everybody's support on the board of this, I think it'll be really clean for the outcome once we finish it up in the center.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No one?
Okay, we're going to continue on with old business, new business, if anyone has anything.
I would just like to make everybody aware, that on October 20th at 6 o'clock, the Athletic Hall of Fame Dinner will be held at Hackensett Country Club. So if I see anybody there, I'm sorry.
Thursday? Is that a Thursday?
Yeah, Thursday night, yeah.
Yeah. And we moved our meeting from the 24th to the 17th.
17th. I don't have a price yet, because we haven't settled on a price for it, so, but I'll let the board know.
That's Hall of Fame?
Athletic Hall of Fame, yeah. And it's cocktail hour today, so.
Have the recipients been announced yet, or no?
Yes.
You don't know them off the top of your head.
Well, at the top of my head, no, but I'll.
It's okay. I'm sure it's in some papers on.
So just as a reminder, Ford, Friends of Riverdale has been the driving force behind this dinner, as well as the Distinguished Graduate Hall of Fame. Several years ago, pre-pandemic, et cetera, we decided to have alternate years, so this year is Athletic Hall of Fame, next year will be Distinguished Graduate.
Anybody else, old business, new business? Let's go into the public comments on anything pertaining to Riverdale Regional School District. Okay, crickets. May I have a motion to return?
I'll make that motion.
Claudia, second?
Second.
Do it for that. Do it in favor?